Tuesday, August 2nd, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left, our Vice Chair, Krista Yelkom, Commissioner Vest. And to the other side, fellow Commissioners Sean Flowerde and Roma Ammonson. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you regain the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.ene.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approving the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 26, 2022.
Move approval. Second, any comments or corrections? Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number two, Claims, approval of the claims process through August 2nd, 2022. And this needs to be amended to include the payroll ending on July 27th, 2022.
I move approval of the claims, including the amendment with payday through July 27th.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, a special presentation. This is Region Five Systems Annual Report and Lancaster County Match Upgrade. CJ Johnson, Region Five Systems Administrator.
Good morning CJ.
Good morning.
Probably should be my first.
We'll wait till public comment. Mr. Johnson is on the agenda.
Well, you know what? I will be on the agenda. Because the highway just got closed right outside of Colby, Kansas. So if you're not on this side of Colby, Kansas, you're not going anywhere. No? Nope? Let's get this into the roll.
If you are-
No, because if I drop dead, you've got to call the governor. Now, you want me to, what? You want me to show out?
We will have you escorted from the chambers, ma'am.
Get me an ambulance. No. Get me a paramedic. 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 Nope. Get me a paramedic. Get me a paramedic. Right here, right now.
Wheelchair?
Again, my name is CJ Johnson. I'm the Regional Administrator with Region Five Systems. We're responsible for providing behavioral health services to individuals across Southeast Nebraska, including Lancaster County. For those individuals who are either underinsured, have no insurance, and we also provide a variety of other services. The way we do that is we contract with a number of behavioral health agencies to provide those services. Before I get started, I'd like to point out on page two of the annual report, there's a picture of Dennis Byers. Denny was longtime chairperson at Region Five, well over a decade. He also was one of the main writers in 2004 when he was in the legislature, creating behavioral health reform. Longtime advocate of people with intellectual disabilities and behavioral health concerns. So, he passed away this last spring. We're going to greatly miss him in the field. He was, like I said, he was a great advocate. So with that said, if you go to page five, you'll see that we handle about $25 million annually. On the bottom pie chart there, which is fiscal year 1920, we're still getting our audit done thanks to COVID. You know how that put a lot of things behind. About 62% of our funding goes towards adult services. And the reason it's such a high percentage is other state dollars you'll find in child welfare and juvenile justice. We also fund part of the emergency system, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. If you go to page eight, you'll see all the providers that we contract with and all the different services that they provide. It's well over 60 different services, as I said, across Southeast Nebraska. All of our residential programs are located in Lancaster County, and that's just because of capacity issues. It's really hard to get a residential program started in a rural area. So, with that, if you just flip the page over, I would like to talk about our data system. We call it Compass. It's very robust. We developed it about four years ago, at the same time the state was developing their data system. We're very fortunate to have this with us, because not only have the providers agreed to give us information on the people we fund, but we've also, through special agreements, are able to get everybody that walks through their door. The state cannot accomplish that. We're the only ones that could take a look at everybody that walks through our providers' doors. And that really helps us make good, independent decisions. Looking at, should we add new services? Should we not add new services? And that becomes even more critical at this point. Because of Medicaid expansion, we actually have seen a significant number of people go on Medicaid. And so we've seen a decline in the drawdown of our dollars. The good thing about that is, we're now looking to reinvest those in the system to come up with new and creative services. We've had focus groups. We have a variety of services. We've already expanded. We've looked in the rural area to expand. And so, having this kind of data system really helps us make good decisions like that. If you go to page, trying to keep all my pages straight. You go to page 24. When behavioral health reform happened, part of what was written in there was what we call our rental assistance program. And that uses stamp tax money that's carved out at the state level. We're able to serve individuals who have a serious mental illness. And the way we do that is through vouchers. A lot of times, people who have mental illness, or maybe even a substance use issue, you know, they'll have a period of time where they're kind of a bad renter. And so they don't qualify for Section 8 housing. So our goal is to get them in housing, give them those vouchers, work with them, get them that length of time behind them, so that they actually can qualify for Section 8 housing. What I'm very proud to say is during the entire length of this program, we have about a 76% success rate at moving those people into Section 8 housing. We also have a couple other rural grants, if you just turn the page. And we also just got what we call Lincoln Permanent Housing. So, the good thing about a lot of these HUD programs that we get, they don't have as strict of requirements of having a diagnosis attached to them. So we're able to work with individuals who are either homeless or near homeless, across not only Lancaster County, but across our rural area. If you go to page 27, we do work with your law enforcement and your crisis center on the emergency system. This allows us to, when somebody's placed on an EPC, this allows us to have them at the crisis center, try and stabilize them, work with other hospitals if necessary, and continue to serve those individuals as we need to. The other thing I'll mention is, right now, two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, 988 rolled out. I don't know if you're familiar with that. It looks like everybody is. Heads are nodding. We're really hoping, as that system keeps getting beefed up, and again, those reinvestment dollars I talked about earlier, we're going to be able to continue to build on our emergency system. What we're hoping is that really puts some relief on law enforcement, so that people are calling that 988 number and not asking for wellness checks in their home, or the police having to go out and check on those. We're also going to be looking at potentially expanding our crisis teams and some other programs. We've been working with Kim Etheridge and Sarah Hoyle on two walk-in centers, one for families and one for adults. We'll continue to work with that. And again, those reinvestment funds, you know, as long as we can keep holding on to those, we'll be able to try and put those into those programs, once we get those up and going. I know ARPA funds are being looked at to help with that startup, which has always been something that's kind of blocked those kind of programs, because you need that capital investment. And very few state funds, et cetera, are able to use that. And that's where those ARPA funds will really come in. And lastly, before we talk about money, if you go to page 32, in 1995, or 1994, actually, there was a governor's summit held, and there was a determination to start wraparound programs across the state. We operate that wraparound program. What that program does is works with families who have a child with a serious emotional disturbance, and pulls together a team, whether it be from the school, the community, their doctors, therapists, et cetera, pull together a team to work with that family. The thing I'm most proud of is, the goal of that program is to keep kids in their communities, their schools, and their homes. And over the years since 1995, we've averaged over 90% accomplishing that. And we're very proud of that. I'll also say that I'm the only person left in the state that's been associated with the wraparound program since its inception in 1995. I still provide all the clinical support for the program. So with that said, if you go to the paper I gave you, that was passed out.
Sorry, handout.
Finished getting it around. Okay, based on the county contribution that's required by state statute, we go by census. The 2020 census was just completed, okay? It was a couple years behind. And so, we're taking a look at the fact that Lancaster County grew by over 10% in population during that time. The other thing that happened was, last year in legislation, the legislature approved a 2% increase to our provider rates. And so that's the middle column. But this year in the legislature, the Appropriations Committee, knowing how badly behavioral health is needed, also knowing how badly COVID and the pandemic really hurt a lot of behavioral health providers. Because a lot of them, especially when they're running like residential programs, they had to cut back to half of the population. Now, we have provided some emergency funding to them. But the legislature this year felt the need to add another 15% increase to those provider rates. And that is what's on the very right side. You'll see that Lancaster County's contribution is $852,853 for mental health, and for substance use, which is on the bottom, is $153,048. Now, I know that because of the population increase, that's an increase in that contribution. I do always want to point out that our relationship with you and the Crisis Center is significant when it comes to addressing emergency protective custody holds, costs to the county, et cetera, et cetera. So, with that said, I can answer any questions.
You shared these numbers with Dennis Meyer. Have you shared these-
We sent out a letter, so I'm assuming Dennis got it.
Question, want to make sure that we have the increases worked into our budget? McCabe was saying yes, so okay. Feel good about that. 988, do you have any statistics or usage, any idea how successful that's been?
Well, it just started two weeks ago, Deb, so we don't have any of those kind of numbers yet.
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping for high usage in a good way. That it's being utilized. Roma?
We'll find out.
The best outcome would be a drop in 911 calls, because these people are going where they're supposed to. That would be difficult.
And I guess the one thing that I would say too, even with the short usage, I think that they are able to handle a lot of those calls over the phone. So they don't necessarily have to bring in a crisis team.
I know Boystown found that true with their helpline. And we're hoping that same thing here with the 988.
Okay.
CJ, I just want to clarify one thing. I think I understand, you know, the state is contributing a sin. We saw the pie chart with the state's contributing a significant amount of funding to Region Five and the programs you're monitoring, with the understanding that all the individual counties would contribute as well. In that way, it's similar to every infrastructure program, or a lot of the programs we deal with. So, even though Lancaster County is spending this money, we're getting a significant return on our investment because of the cooperation.
Well, and because, because they built that into state statute that matched requirement, the nice thing is, the Board of Directors is a representative from each of the counties, so you know that you're being represented in those final decisions being made. So, yep.
Yeah, and the rate per individual is the same, whether you're in Saline County, or Oto County, or L.A.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
CJ, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Cool.
And thanks to Krista, who serves as our governing board representative and does an excellent job of relaying information back to us. Onto consent items.
These are team business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice, unless there's an exception. These items were approved as one. With a single vote of the Board of Commissioners, these items are approved of. Amendments to the following county contracts for the annual supply of ice melt, C-19-620 with Nebraska Landscape Solutions, Inc., C-19-621 with Egan Supply, C-19-622 with Helena Chemical Company. Amendments to the following county contracts for the annual service of offset printing, design services, and related services, C-19-547 with Fire Screen, C-19-546 with Cornhusker State Industries. Amendments to the following county contracts, C-18-534 with Diamond Vogel, Inc., doing business as Diamond Vogel, for paint and related products. C-22-494 with Midwest Mechanical Contractors of Nebraska, Inc., for HVAC replacement for Department of Motor Vehicle locations. C-22-493 with Midwest Mechanical Contractors of Nebraska, Inc., for chiller replacement at the Youth Services Center. C-21-672 with Encompass for the annual service of sit-to-stand workstations and accessories. Right-of-way contracts with the following, John M. and Diane S. Gill, North 140th Street and West Mill Road, in an amount of $1,259. Rick R. and Kathleen A. Horstley, Northwest 112th Street and West Holdridge Street, in an amount of $775. Rita Ann Kramer, Northwest 40th Street and West McElvy Road, in an amount of $595. Change order number two to county contract C-22-216 with Constructors, Inc., to add water used for lime stabilization. Utility permit 2277, allowing Windstream Nebraska to install new communication line from Bennett Road to South 46th Street, and east to South 54th Street, and then south. Grant awards to Nebraska Crime Commission for Bureau of Justice Assistance funding for the Lancaster County diverting the school-to-prison pipeline in the following amounts, $150,000, $21,536. Grant contracts with the following, League of Human Dignity for the Center for Independent Living Program, in an amount of $33,000, $760. YMCA of Lincoln for the Teen Time at Northeast YMCA Program, in an amount of $16,000. Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Serving Immigrant and Refugee Youth Program, in an amount of $47,976.
Move approval in the consent items?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent items. Call the roll, please.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. New Business 5A is a resolution in a matter of establishing a temporary maximum weight limit on damaged roads in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, by state statute, the county engineer can recommend the placement of weight limits on certain roads that are damaged in Lancaster County. We have a section of Yankee Hill at approximately 98th Street that was damaged by a number of trucks that were detoured by the South Beltway, and we need to limit the weight on that road to limit further destruction. And so, this is the first time in my tenure that we have done this, and we have the ability to do it. It's just not something that I ever really liked to do, because it does hamper the traveling public. However, in this case, with these temperatures that we continue to have, it is necessary.
Move approval?
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign the 2021-2022 Lancaster County Annual Certification of Use of Cash Payment Form.
Move approval? Second. Second, call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5C is to be held. 5D is an addendum to the 2021 through 2024 bargaining agreement between Lancaster County and the Lancaster County Deputy Sheriff's Association for Eternal Order of Police Lodge Number 29, under county contract C-22-157. In a matter of a referral bonus pilot program, the pilot program is effective from September 1st, 2022 through August 23rd, 2023.
Move approval?
Second. Call the roll, please.
Yelkom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an addendum to the 2021 through 2023 bargaining agreement between Lancaster County and local 1536 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, under county contract C-22-230. In a matter of a referral bonus program, the pilot program is effective from September 1st, 2022, through August 23rd, 2023.
1st, 2022 through August 23rd, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5F is a special desert license application from Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage for events at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148th Street, Walton, Nebraska on September 10th, 2022.
Move approval? Second. We have a motion. Yes, I do want to invite Nicole Borkwin with us. Thank you very much. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and Cornhusker Beverage and this event?
Sure. So I'm the owner of Cornhusker Beverage in Omaha, Nebraska. Our corporate name is Willow Springs Bottling Company. We've been around for ever. We're one of the 10 oldest businesses operating in Omaha. We've been catering beverages for events like this for probably close to 40 years at this point. My dad was the owner before me, and now I've been the owner for two years after working under him for about 26 years. And we kind of specialize in catering events like this. So this is just a wedding reception at Prairie Creek Inn for about 250 guests. The guests will be present from 6:00 to 11:00 P.M. We'll have our professional bartenders there who will do everything to follow the law. They'll be carding. They'll be not serving any 121. This is what we do on a daily basis, and this is just our first time at Prairie Creek Inn.
Great.
Questions?
Honored to have you in Lancaster County. I move approval.
We've already got a motion?
Oh, sorry. I will report the motion.
Your experience obviously gives us a great deal of comfort as we permit events like this in Lancaster County. So thank you for your time today, and we know that Prairie Creek Inn does an excellent job as well. So we look forward to seeing you more frequently, Nicole. All right, motion is second. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is reappointments to the Aging Partners Area Wide Advisory Council for the term from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. This includes Irina Garrickian, Jenica Long, and John Wyville.
Move approval? Second.
We thank these three people for their volunteer service. Call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is request for additional emergency rental assistance funds in the amount of $318,109.59 authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster County Human Services. This is requesting the last tranche of funding that we have for emergency rental assistance two. So if you remember with emergency rental assistance one, they gave all of the funding upfront in one large sum. With emergency rental assistance two, as you obligate the funding, then you have to request additional funding. This particular funding will help us aid the university with the tenant assistance project that they have where they help with eviction court. So we've been able to disperse funding outside of the city limits to the villages and townships, primarily Waverly, Roca, and then Hickman, but other villages as well. So with that, are there any questions? And two, I would mention that Commissioner Vest, you are the commissioner that is designated in the emergency rental assistance, so they're looking for your signature on this.
Because it started right?
Yes, because it started that long ago, yes.
All right, so don't leave the room until you sign this important document.
I still like you, Senator. I move approval.
Second. All right, motion is second to approve. Request, call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
5I is a bid award appeal from Dynamic Dirt Works and Demolition LLC.
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Eric Sinowicki from the county attorney's office. So this is, this comes to the board as a bid appeal for final resolution in front of the board. It involves an appeal from a company, Dynamic Dirt Works and Demolition LLC, for not being awarded a bid for a county project, and that was appealed to the Procurement Appeals Board. They did hear the matter and provided a recommendation denying the appeal on a unanimous three to zero basis. I believe those findings were presented to this board on July 28th at a staff meeting by Candace Behrens from the county attorney's office and Jeff Kimball, the county purchasing agent. So it is now before you to deny or grant the appeal.
So the motion would be to deny the appeal?
If that's what the board wants to do, that was the recommendation by the procurement board.
Yeah, we're following the recommendation, yeah. We did get a thorough briefing on this, and for reasons that were explained to us, I make a motion that we deny this appeal.
Second. Do you have anything to add? All right, call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an agreement with Shimmer Associates, Inc., to evaluate the existing Lancaster County facilities as described in Exhibit A, the cost of county is not to exceed $89,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer and?
Ed Lawman, Lancaster County Facilities Manager.
I've placed an exhibit on the overhead just to show the locations of our county shops. This is a study that we talked about during the budget presentation and again a couple weeks ago to help us figure out what to do long-term with our facilities. We have 13 buildings around Lancaster County. The counting continues to grow. Our equipment continues to also get bigger. We have a lot of county assets that are having to sit outside now, and we only have one wash bay in the entire county to wash this equipment once it's covered with salt or mud or whatever else we get into on a daily basis. And so we're in dramatic need of facilities upgrades. I am not an architect. I'm an engineer. I don't pretend to be an architect. Ed is not an architect either.
Amen.
So that is why we are embarking on this study to get a better grasp of what we need to do with our facilities.
Here's our motion. I move that we approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agreement with Shimmer Associates. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an agreement with Daniel Legedro, Ph.D., for professional mental health services at the Crisis Center, cost of county is not to exceed $83,200.
Hi, good morning. This is my, the psychologist that I've been work, that's been working with us for quite a while, had decided to retire almost a year ago. And he's been holding on. We've reduced some of his hours, and he finally did retire last Thursday. And so this is a contract to try to continue some services right now. In the meantime, till I can hire a psychiatrist, a psychologist, I mean. And so that's what this contract is, is trying to keep him on with limited number of hours and work.
Long and faithful service God he has provided us.
Yeah, he's been around, and he's been trying to get out of the office for quite a while, and this was, at this stage, this was pretty much the only way to bring him back in and do some coverage for a limited number of time, or limited period of time again.
And you've been searching for a long time.
Yes, I have.
So how, what's going to happen next?
Well, we, in talking with Candace and HR, we're going to start looking at trying to bring in a headhunter to an agency to look for it also. I've been working with them on a different pay structure also because that has been a major part of why I have not been able to hire. I had some, I have had only a couple of people interested, but I was unable to hire them. I wasn't even able to pay them what they were currently making and such. And so that's where it's at. And so we're trying to do that. And it's taken some good strides in the last week for trying to make it happen, but it's still have to find the right person that wants to do the job and such too, so.
If you don't mind, what was the disparity in what you could pay and what they were receiving?
The top of my range was not, was less than what they were making currently. And the top of the range right now is the 115. They were wanting, they were wanting in the range of, they were asking for 140 at the time and such, but, and so, yeah.
Change that has to happen at Personal Policy Review Board?
It would, from the standpoint of a new pay range and all that stuff for it, yeah. It would have to go down that avenue.
Move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is an agreement with Mary Rittenberg, M.E.D., L.A.D.C., for professional alcohol and drug abuse counseling services at the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center. The county shall reimburse Ms. Rittenberg at the rate of $110 per evaluation completed and $35 per hour for all other services.
This is a renewal of a contract that already existed. It upped the rates a little bit, but beyond that, there's really no difference with this one. You know, the funding to pay for chemical dependency valves comes through the region already, and so this is just a renewal. And there'll be another one coming after this one too here, hopefully within next week. We'll see.
Second. All right. Motion by Yocum, second by Amundson. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
5M is an agreement with Signal Group Consulting, LLC, to provide federal advocacy services. The cost to county is $70,000.
Move approval? Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is an interlocal agreement with the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services in Lancaster County to provide printing and mailing services. The contract shall be effective upon execution by all parties for a four-year term.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an interlocal agreement with the City of Waverly to support the establishment of the city's aquatic center through a grant of $250,000. An American Rescue Plan Act funds from the county to the city.
I am really excited about this project, the development that's going on in the City of Waverly, and I would move approval.
Second. This will be a great asset for all of Lancaster County and our visitors.
And it's 100, and how much today is the temperature? Would it?
Yeah, you've never had a day better aligned with a weather like this, yeah.
All right, call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an access agreement with the Lower Platte South Natural Resource District to provide the NRD access to certain portions of Wilderness Park for purposes of performing geotechnical and survey work for a stream stability project at the Wilderness Park Trail Bridge.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
I will abstain as my husband is on the NRD board. He's a director.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Q is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to order a contract for crack sealing 2022 to Northwest Asphalt and Maintenance in the amount of $197,550.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The exhibit I've placed on the overhead shows the locations at which we are hoping to apply crack sealing to. What becomes interesting, of course, is typically you don't see us come to you with a second crack sealing contract of the year. In this case, last year's crack sealing contract really didn't go as far as we thought it would go. And so it's very difficult to estimate the number of cracks in a road, and sometimes the road cracks more before we get there. And so in this case, we are doing a second contract because as I have spoke to you before, it's really important that we seal these slabs to keep moisture from getting in between these cracks and underneath our paved surface.
Move approval? Second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to order a contract for fuel tank maintenance and service to Dr. Feelgood in the amount of $30,000.
Ed Lawman, Lancaster County Engineering Facility Manager. This recommendation was put forth to use this contract for cleaning of our tanks. We find it very valuable to be able to get all of the contaminants out of our storage tanks as well as water and things like that so we can maintain our budgets, maintain our equipment in a top manner without using additional funds to major repairs. I move approval.
Second. Makes sense. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is renewal information requests from, let me start again, renewal information request form for fiduciary liability coverage for travelers.
Move approval?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none agenda medusae at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, please continue.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August fifth, two thousand twenty-two at eight-thirty A.M. in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two at nine A.M. with a Board of Equalization immediately following in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV, YouTube, Roku, and Apple TV.
Move we adjourn.
Second. All right. Motion is second to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. We are adjourned, and we will now call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, August second.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. Material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move approval. Second. Okay. Motion is second to approve the minutes on Tuesday, July nineteenth. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a public, our public hearings. First one is four fifty-one exemption applications for the two thousand twenty-two year.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, Scott Gaines, Deputy County Assessor, Registered Deeds. Point of clarification, this is listed under an agenda item saying exemption applications. All but one of these are exemption applications, the, and our office is recommending approval of every one of the exemption applications. There is an item on here that is a review of an already granted exemption, and that's